overwhelmed and we were able to give jobs, you know, part time and temporary jobs to 60 more people largely community members helping to track, you know, investigate cases that are reported to the health department of COVID. And then to identify and support those people who are infected. In the last, just in the last 70 days, some statistics I can share with you. Our local case investigation team has been able to follow up on over 5,000 cases and contacts. And so they they'll get the case, you know, usually through doctors offices or through our labs that report the positives to public health. And we'll call people up and talk with them and identify when they got sick and who their contacts are, identifying those people who they came in close contact with. And then going from there. So other things that we've been working on, working a lot with our Latino Leadership Council and Sierra Community House up in Eastern Placer. But also, so other community groups here and and you know, the rest of the county to really have a prevention campaign, especially aimed at populations who are disproportionately impacted by coronavirus. We've operated, we've had a warehouse in public health where we, you know, warehouse, you know, kept supplies, kind of emergency supplies. But we've really been able, we've been receiving through the federal government and the state government constantly shipments of personal protective equipment that we've been trying to push out to, you know, local healthcare providers and first responders and schools and other community based providers. So we've processed approximately 3,000 orders and provided about 1.5 million pieces of personal protective equipment just here in the last six months or so. Obviously, we've been, you know, operating, trying to push out as much information as we can. We have a, if you go to the Placer County website, you can see our online dashboard and kind of in depth data on COVID-19. We've responded to probably thousands of public and media inquiries. So public health has been busy. And in addition, there's the division that, you know, we have other public health programs like our, and that do things like Children's Medical Services and vital statistics, birth records, death records. Our whole person care program, working with folks who are experiencing homelessness. The list goes on and on. So public health has been busy. But our other divisions have also been really busy. We have the Adult System of Care that provides adult crisis mental health services. So we've seen a 39% increase in the volume of mental health crisis services. Also have unfortunately seen an increase in the, it looks like an increase in the suicide rate this year. And so we're sort of investigating that. We're on track probably to have about a 25% increase in the suicide rate here in Placer County for the year over the five year average in Placer County. Adult System Care also has our Adult Protective Services and In-Home Supportive Services programs. They regularly check in on about 1,400 of our most vulnerable residents. And we actually have created a backup system to ensure that a provider is always available for vulnerable residents in need. We have our Environmental Health Division, which is partnered with our HHS Administration Division to facilitate the Placer Eats and Drinks Program. It's a program that supports local restaurants struggling through the pandemic. And Environmental Health's also worked with our food facility operators to promote coronavirus safe practices. We have a Human Services Division is actually our largest division. It's staffed these COVID-19 pop-up center, pop-up call centers. Just between March and May, this, that call center handled over 8,000 calls and developed procedures that when 211 Placer set up in May, they were able to hand over those procedures to 211 Placer. And it made really a huge difference in the ability to answer calls coming in. By the way, our goal is to have calls, you know, to 211 answered and within one minute. So to have, you know, a turnaround time of less than a minute. Obviously would like to get that down even lower, but that was kind of the starting place. If you might have heard of 211, we were, I believe, the, one of the larger counties in California without a 211 system. And we've just implemented, put that in place here in the midst of COVID. So it was a big accomplishment that we're really pleased about. And then our, you know, other divisions, I mentioned Human Services in addition to the call center has provided rental assistance to low income residents who are at risk of homelessness due to COVID related impacts. Helped administer Project Room Key, which houses people experiencing homelessness in surplus local motel rooms. We have Animal Services Division runs our Animal Services Center here in Auburn, in North Auburn, where I'm sitting tonight. But has housed pets of people experiencing homelessness. How through Project Room Key has again, really taken care of our animals through this. I know they've had, had an impact as well. Our Children's System of Care, really in partnership with our courts and the judicial bench and probation has helped prevent a backlog of child welfare and probation cases that many other counties in California are experiencing. So we really haven't experienced that. Really, and we've never, a lot of places, you know, have closed, had to close temporarily. And we're really proud of the fact that our, we haven't had to close. We've kept services going. Referrals have decreased by about 10% in the first eight months of 2020, including the largest decrease of 20, 27% occurring in April. So in the last three months though, the referrals have stabilized. Like I said, we've tried to remain open and do whatever it takes to support our most vulnerable children and their families. And finally, our Administrative Division has really tracked down all the new funding streams that have come with COVID, you know, federal funds, state funds, and making sure we're able to serve our community in a financially sustainable way. So that's sort of where we are is Health and Human Services and an overview of, you know, what each of our divisions, some of the things that they're doing. As far as the, you know, the, the virus itself, what's going on? So here in Placer County, we've now had about 3,700 lab confirmed cases of COVID. But actually, the cases are coming down slowly right now compared to recent months. We're, right now, we're experiencing about 15 cases per day in the last week, which is down quite a bit. This time last month, we were probably seeing about 30 cases per day coming in. So it's about half of where we were just a month ago. And then the really good news are hospitalizations have continued to decrease. So we saw a high of 68 hospitalizations back August 4th. And then yesterday, we were, we had, I believe, you know, right now, we have 18 people in our, in Placer County Hospital, Placer County Hospitals due to COVID. Unfortunately, we have seen, you know, several more deaths in the last week or so. So we've learned of 51 deaths now due to COVID that have, that has COVID listed on the death certificate either as the cause or contributing factor to death. The 63% of those were residents of long-term care facilities. So the other good news, working with our long-term care facilities, I think they're learning. And we're, we still had some outbreaks that we had one large outbreak that just seems to be getting under, you know, under control now. So, you know, I'm hopeful going forward. We'll talk about the, you know, we have the, you know, the different tiers. I know a lot of people are interested in the tiers because they do, the number of cases, both our testing, it's called the positivity rate, the test, what percentage of our, the tests that we do come back positive? That's one of the factors that goes into determining what tier and how quickly we can reopen businesses and other parts of the economy. But so the, the, as, I guess, people who are following this know, we didn't, we were hoping to get assigned, reassigned to the orange tier based on our numbers getting better. Because of, it looks like the Labor Day weekend, we had some cases that lagged and came in late. So those who follow at home on the, on our dashboard probably saw, it looks like we were, you know, if you just looked at the, the real time numbers, we were in the orange. But what happened is we had a delay in, it was a, it's a usual lag that we have. The numbers at the state calculates the tiers are based, they're, have a seven day lag. And so when we got some new cases, some of them came from school, skilled nursing facilities outbreak that I mentioned before, and a number of them came from other places, you know, people who had exposures over the Labor Day weekend. So we had just for those cases, a doubling of the number of people when we did the investigation who reported attending a gathering. And so that's one of the things that we're trying to get the word out. The good news is we're, we're moving in the right direction. We had a slight uptick which prevented us from going into the orange. I know we're all disappointed about that, but I really believe that, looking at the numbers now, that if we continue current trend this time next week, well, actually, a week from tomorrow. So they changed tiers on Tuesdays. We should, we're, I'm cautiously optimistic that we're on track to go make it to the orange tier next week. As far, last thing, I'll just talk a little bit about schools and I want to stop and hear your questions. Right now, we have, I believe, three school districts that are in Placer County that are moving forward with in-person learning right now. So far, the, the numbers of COVID cases in our schools have been pretty low. And so I'm encouraged by that. We do anticipate more cases in our schools as more districts move to in-person instruction. But, you know, right now, you know, they've been relatively low. So we're monitoring that closely, working, we're on calls almost every day with our, with our schools. So monitoring that closely, but right now, we haven't seen, you know, a lot of outbreaks in schools yet. So why don't I just, I'll stop there and I'm, I'm here on Zoom. I can't really see of hands raised, so I'm hoping someone can kind of lead me there and tell me if there are, there are questions or hands raised, then I'll stop there and take your questions. Thanks so much again for the opportunity.
Yeah. If anyone has a question, please raise your hand. I'm going to go ahead and read one of the question and answer questions from Gary W. It asks if you're coordinating with the VA.
Yeah. So I know, actually, we have within, I mentioned our, our different divisions. Within our Human Services Division, we have the Veteran Service Office there. And so we, our Veterans Services Officer, yeah, they coordinate with the Veterans Administration every day. But I guess I would, I would love to know, I don't know if Gary can respond, if you have particular areas of the VA that you think that we could do a better job of coordinating with? Would love to hear that.
Okay, great.
Again, I know, in fact, we have CBOC, a community base, for those of you who know the, I used to work in the VA. So the VA Lingo, there's a community based outpatient clinic right here down the street from, from us. So the VA healthcare system. I know we talked to both Mather and the VA in Reno pretty regularly. But if there are particular aspects of VA, that's sort of near and dear to my heart. If there are things that we could be doing better, I would love to hear about that from you.
Great. We also have Gail McCafferty raised her hand. So Gail, go ahead and unmute yourself and you can ask your question.
Okay, we're wearing the face masks to protect our nose and our mouth. I asked this question before, the eyes, you know, can absorb the COVID? And you can get the COVID through your eyes? Is that true?
Yes, that is true. Thank you for the question. So the, you know, COVID, the virus can, is generally more, you know, how is it transmitted? It's lots of different ways that we learn, we learn more and more about the virus. This is a not, a new, a novel virus. So initially, and I think it's still good to continue to, you know, wash our hands and do other things to prevent surfaces, you know, getting contamination from surfaces. But the number one way COVID seems to be spreading is through contact with our nose, mouth and eyes. And so, you know, certainly, we talk about wearing, you have a mask over your nose and your mouth in a healthcare setting. So I came from working in Sutter where we were recommending eye protection. That's not a recommendation. It's not, you know, something that we talk about just for the general public because it's primarily spread, you know, through, you know, things like coughing and sneezing. But if your eyes are not protected and someone were to sneeze directly in your face, you absolutely could, you know, get, get COVID that way. So not something, just for the general public, not recommending eye protection. But, you know, it, it, at the same time, it doesn't, certainly it doesn't hurt anything. I mean, I know that's one of the challenges of, for people who aren't used to wearing goggles or something like that. There, there are, it's not, it's not comfortable. But there's no, there's no downside to, for people who want to wear eye protection for doing so. And actually, I mentioned the warehouse, we receive it, we have a lot of goggles. So we could probably hook you up with some goggles through public health or through a community based group if people were interested.
Well, it seems to me those shields would be protecting everything, you know? I don't know. I have a, I have a nephew who lives in Placer County and he has autism. And he, we, you know, cannot get him to wear the mask. And then they finally put that on him.
Yep.
With that.
Yep. Yeah, the shields, I've, I've heard the same thing, Gail, that for people who, you know, can't wear masks, that the shield, they can often tolerate the shields.
Okay, thank you.
At my pleasure.
Does anybody else have a question for Dr. Oldham?
I put one into his question.
Oh, I see it. Sharon and I unmuted you real quick. And if you want to unmute yourself and you can ask your question and then we'll get Niels.
Yeah, I wanted to know if there's any other way to get people in, in different businesses that don't require and they're not enforcing masks? Or like sometimes in the markets, people walk in, they don't have a mask on, even though there's a sign saying they have masks. Is there any way to get some of the businesses to make people comply more than what they're doing right now? And then also, how many people in Auburn Faith have COVID? And how many people in Forest Hill have COVID? Please?
Good. Well, I answer your first question, then I might have to quickly turn and see if I can pull up on the dashboard. So we'll see how well the dashboard, you know, how good it works tonight. So, you know, the first question around businesses and, you know, what are we doing to improve adherence to masking and other COVID related guidance? You know, we're first, not really taking a harsh enforcement stance and Health and Human Services. I think across the county in general, we do get citizen complaints. And for instance, for restaurants where, and other food vendors where environmental health is already has a regulatory role. You know, we'll, if we get a citizen complaint, we'll, you know, make, generally make a call and reinforce the guidance and encourage, provide education, that sort of thing. But in general, we're not kind of taking a strong enforcement stance. We're taking more of an educational, excuse me, stance around those, those types of citizen complaints. But we do encourage them. You know, encourage the citizens, if you, if you see something and you have a concern, you can call our office and we'll follow up on that. I will say, we're seeing, you know, our businesses for the most part have been, you know, very much on board with, you know, trying to, because I think the general public is, as the people who frequent businesses demand, for instance, mask, mask wearing. Our businesses have, have really increased their, encouraging their patrons to do so. And so thank you. I actually, someone just sent me, may, trying to make me look good here, the cases for Forest Hills. Looks like we have 16 total cases in Forest Hill total. For, so you all have been doing, for those of you in Forest Hill, thank you. Not, not a lot of spread in Forest Hill. So thanks for all the effort that you've been taking to reduce the spread of COVID in your area. As far as that Sutter Auburn Faith Hospital, I know, we just had, we have a call with Mitch Hannah and the leadership at Sutter Auburn Faith and Kim Myers every Friday. And I believe as of Friday, they only had one case in the hospital. For a while, they actually didn't have any cases for, I think, two or three weeks. So they've been very, very low numbers at Sutter Auburn Faith. Most of the cases have been going to Sutter Roseville. And then, let's see, in the North Auburn area, I believe, yeah, 100, just, you didn't ask this, but I just have it at my fingertips, 189 cases of COVID in the North Auburn area. So again, most, most, the majority of the COVID cases have been in South, South Placer.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Neil, if you have a question, you can go ahead and ask it.
Are there any question, or excuse me, are there any opportunities for volunteers to do some, whatever work could be done by a volunteer at the county level?
Yeah, so we're not right now taking volunteers to work for the county. And I'll say, from time to time, we do take volunteers through the, directly through the county, primarily like student interns over the summer. But we've mainly asking for volunteers to go through other kind of community based organizations. And so the, the main reason for that is if you are working on behalf of the county, there's a whole background check and a lot of other things that you have to go through. So, but if you have an interest, it would appreciate, there's a lot of need right now. And there's a lot of people who want to help out. And we have great charities and philanthropy here in Placer County. And I know they are, many of them are taking volunteers and we can help connect you with them. But as far as just volunteering directly for the county right now, we're not taking volunteers right now.
Who might be the contact for that list of names?
For our different volunteer organizations?
Yes.
Yeah, Neil, if you want to send, let me give you my email address. You're going to send me an email. I'll get, especially what types of things you might want to do. I'm happy to forward it. And my email is just my first initial R. Then my last name, Oldham, which is spelled like old ham, O L D H A M. And then at placer.ca for California.gov for government. And that's R, Oldham, old ham, at placer.ca.gov.
Thank you.
At my pleasure.
I'll put that in the, in that as well. So that anybody can, can grab it if they need to. And so I know Dr. Oldham has to go here in a few minutes. He has a meeting at 7:30. Gail, do you have a quick question you want to ask? Because we really only have one more minute with Dr. Oldham.
Quick one about the flu shot that the county is going to have drive-throughs?
Yes.
I think that's important to talk about.
Yeah, thank you. Gail, I, I almost, my, my team would have been very disappointed with me had I not had the opportunity to encourage everyone to get your flu shot. So that's one of the big concerns is, you know, going into flu season with COVID. We've never really done this before, you know, had COVID and flu circulating at the same time. So it's always a good idea to get your flu shot, but especially this year. And yes, we've have, Public Health is running flu clinics. Actually, the flu vaccine is very available. So just about any pharmacy has it right now. I've checked in with healthcare providers. They all seem to have ample quantities of the flu shot. So wherever you can get it, please, please do. Thank you, Gail.
Rob, before you go, I just, I want to thank you for, and your whole team. Because this pandemic has been, has drawn so many resources, so much time and energy and changing direction and, and just, just from my experience of the vitriol I get on emails and posts and blogs, I can't even imagine what your team has been receiving. So please thank them all for the incredible work and effort they've put in in continuing so many services to our community during this pandemic. So.
Thank you. I will pass that along Supervisor Gustafson. And yeah, there are, it's an amazing, that's really why I came back, because it's a great team to work with. And yeah, they're, they recognize, I mean, there's, you know, people are hurting. And so they recognize that, yeah, we, we get the, you know, sometimes the frustration comes, comes out on us as public servants. And, but that's, you know, we're, you know, we're, we're used to that and we'll, we'll, we appreciate, we appreciate your sentiments though.
Thank you so much for joining us. We really appreciate it.
Thanks so much for the opportunity.
Bye.
Bye.
Up next, we have our reports, public safety reports is first. So up first, we have Sergeant Connors from the Placer County Sheriff's Office. I think Sergeant Connors, all you have to do is unmute your, yep, you're good to go. I can't hear you.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sergeant Ty Connors, Placer County Sheriff's Office. It's been a while since I've been on with you guys. So I appreciate the invite. Just kind of a quick update. Obviously, it's been pretty busy with all the fires and everything that's been happening. On the flip side, a lot of our Forest Hill deputies have been busy with the mutual aid requests for butte at the butte fire for search and rescue. So we've been sending a lot of deputies up there to assist with. They say, you know, when you have a major fire going through communities, again, all the missing people have been accounted for, but you got those unaccounted for people that maybe have got trapped in the fire. So before they open it up, we've been using our search and rescue members to go out and search around the burned areas for, for victims. And just, we concluded our searches last week. Right now, they're using local resources. I want to give, we've also been sending our deputies out to other mutual aids for Tooleme County and Mariposa for other searches. So it's been pretty busy. Our deputies have also during this time, we had about nine arrests last month for September. And kind of varying from domestic violence to drug charges. Recently, I just posted a thing, our deputy Mackenstad, he's been doing a really good job staying proactive up there. I know a lot of people probably saw that pursuit that went through with the motorcycle last week. And that guy was apprehended. So again, I want to give a shout out to all the deputies up there in Forest Hill who've been, again, making the community safer and working hard during these strange times. And I know the mask question just came up as far as, you know, the enforcement of masks. And then our sheriff has always took a stance, like Dr. Oldham has said too, as far as more of an educational piece when it comes to mask enforcement. If we do get, receive a complaint or anything, we go in and basically educate people. As far as the fork fire goes, I want to take away any thunder from the fire department if they're going to give a report. They have transitions last week into a type four team, into a management team. And while I believe they, they will be having a coordinator meeting coming up soon. But the fire has been, we've been very blessed and fortunate to have the fire stay within its kind of boundaries and hasn't grown too much. I did post, sorry about the late post on that, when it came to the explosives that were being used to take down a lot of the dead trees in the King Scar Fire. You know, they're, they just found it to be safer for them to take down some of these massive trees that were from the King Fire and just kind of trying to, you know, mitigate the containment lines. And I think that's all I have for right now. I haven't forgot, Gail has been wanting to represent, basically present a quilt that was made for the Sheriff's Office, but mainly for the Forest Hill deputies. So hopefully it'll be having something soon for presentation from the local ladies up there. I really got to appreciate for all the hard work they put in this quilt that they want to present to the Forest Hill deputies. And I think that's all I have. So if you, anyone have any questions?
Yes. Does anyone have any questions? Just a reminder, you can click the raise your hand icon at the bottom or type in a question in the question and answer, or if you're star nine, if you're on your phone.
And I do have to give a reminder regarding the Facebook. Again, I've been pretty busy going to all the different things going on, trying to stay on top of our Facebook page. But again, our Facebook page is linked to the Sheriff's Office. It's not my personal Facebook group. Just as a reminder that we got to kind of keep our political views and everything off that. It's mainly for to try and just kind of keep the information of concerns and stuff like that within the community. So I like to keep it that way and not have to hide other people's posts when they tend to get a little, I think, sometimes too comfortable in our group. get a little, I think, sometimes too comfortable on the, on our group Facebook page. So I appreciate if you guys just make sure and follow the rules and regulations when it comes to that group.
Gail had a question. Gail, go ahead and mute yourself.
Oh, it's more of a comment. Ty, thank you. We did the quilt not to be thanked for it. We did the quilt to thank you. Protecting us and hard work. So that's the deal.
Well, you're welcome, Gail. Hopefully, we can get something going on this, this week, or by the beginning of next week, so we can get something going on.
Well, give me a call. I know you guys are busy.
All right. Thank you, Sergeant Connors. I don't see any other hands raised. Thank you for joining us.
All right, you guys have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, bye.
So up next, we have, I don't see Officer Lucy. It looks like he wasn't able to make it from CHP. So I see that Michael Woodbridge is on the line. So Michael, if you want to unmute yourself, you can go ahead and begin.
Thanks. Can you hear me all right? Great.
Yes.
Well, good evening. Yeah, so give a little update on what's going on in the Tahoe National Forest and our, our corner of it. So we've been pretty lucky, actually forest-wide, with all these big fires, we've only had some small ones on the forest and only one recently on, on the American River Ranger District. So last week, there was a very small, I guess we call it quarter acre fire. That was a escaped campfire, I believe, off Soda Springs Road up in that area. So it looked like, most likely, it was some, some people dispersed camping, which is not legal, and had a fire, which is also not legal right now in the forest. And so some citizens, so we're actually trying to put it out even before we got there. So I think, you know, a lot, a lot of our, our visitors know what the rules are with fire right now and know the fire danger. And so we appreciate that. But there's still some of those folks that just don't get it yet. But yeah, we're, you know, we've been lucky. We haven't had the fork fire come over onto us or any other large fires. But we are, of course, still getting smoke. Today was a pretty good day, but, but we're all getting smoke, and that's mostly from fires over across, across the valley, near, near the Bay Area, kind of wine country. That's where most of our smoke is coming from. It's not local. Sometimes, like when we recently had a north wind, we were getting smoke coming in from the north complex over on the Plumas, which is just north of the Tahoe National Forest. So we are still in some restrictions here on the Tahoe. And that means no dispersed camping. So the only place you can camp right now on, on the Tahoe is in campgrounds, developed campgrounds that are open. So on American River, that means Shirttail and Giant Gap Campgrounds. And we are still taking reservations there. And French Meadows Campground, which is now, there's still a fee and there's still water for the next two weeks. And we'll be probably shutting the water down because of the freezes that could ruin that system. But it's first come, first served now at the French Meadows. And it's beautiful up there, although still very dry. I was up there twice last week. And, you know, we literally haven't had any rain. And so we continue to have warm temperatures. It's starting to cool off this week, which is good. But it continues to be extremely dry, continue to have very high and extreme fire danger on the forest. So no campfires, even in our campgrounds. That's still the case right now. No target shooting. That's also not allowed on the forest. So these are all temporary restrictions based on conditions. And it looks like there's a good chance that we might actually get some rain, which is fantastic news for many of us, maybe all of us. Maybe this Friday, Saturday, coming in for the weekend. So these restrictions that we have in place right now could change once we have precipitation, because these are really because of the conditions out there, the dryness, the fire danger. And so if we do get some rain this weekend, there's a good chance that will help, help us to be able to lift a lot of those restrictions and allow more, you know, camping, campfires, things like that. But stay tuned on that, and you'll hear news on our website and our social media pages when those restrictions change. Let's see, speaking of rain, our OHV trail system, so all those trails around Sugar Pine, as well as the trail system as it, as it connects up all the way up towards Robinson's Flat. That is going to now be opening and closing based on soil moisture. So I'm this week probably going to sign a plan that lays out how we will do the measuring and, and decision-making on when to open and close those trails. So I mentioned this, or maybe Matt Brownlee mentioned it for me, back early this year, towards the end of spring. But instead of only opening and closing the trail system based on fixed dates, which is what we've done in the past, now it will be based on soil moisture. So that means instead of closing on December 31st and not opening again until April or end of March, it's going to be based on the soil, the soil moisture. So if we get a lot of rain in November, December, or hopefully even October, and it gets to the point that those soils are saturated, to the point where they would cause damage to the, to the trail surfaces, then we would close the trail system and some of those roads where trails are, or some of those roads where you have native surfaces that could be damaged. And then they could open back up if things dry out. So certainly more based on what the actual condition is on the ground, which I think people will appreciate, because there's often been times where during a fixed date closure, we've had a big dry spell and people could be out using those trails. So wanted to let you guys know about that. I think it's good news, and I think it's good for users. Also, speaking of our trails, we received funding, we applied for grants with the Green Sticker Program. And we've got funding to build the trail that we proposed between China Wall and Robinson Flat. So it'll be a trail that connects those two points. A motorized trail, single track. And that will probably start next season with building and putting that together. So great news there that we got the money through the Green Sticker Program, which we are very active with, and we'll have a new trail up and running in the next couple of years. One final thing, I'll just mention that it sounds early, which feels early too, but we will be advertising in October. In fact, we're advertising right now maybe a few positions, our seasonal opportunities for next season. So 2021 summer field season, we're advertising positions that includes trail and campground positions, seasonal work for the forest on USA Jobs, which is the official place to be able to apply for jobs with the federal government. So some of those might be on right now through the 10th, and then others will be coming up October 30th to November 10th. So if anyone's interested, just want to let, let you all know, because it's great to have local folks working on, on our local forest. Any questions for me?
Sharon, I unmuted you, so you can go ahead and unmute yourself and ask your question.
Yes. A question is, well, a couple of questions. One is, I think, I was upset, a lot of people in town were upset when we were going to have a wind event, and electricity was being shut down and the forest was open for camping. And I know that a lot of us would rather, being that we're like a paradise situation, would rather have the forest, I know it's public lands, but have it closed. And those kinds of situations, or especially when it's so dry right now, because as you found out, people do dispersed camping and they don't care. It's not their home, not their land. So if they have a fire, somebody leaves it, they're not concerned. But having an event and then having it open doesn't make sense.
Yeah, well, you know, we, we were closed for a little while, along with all forests in California, a pretty unprecedented step there. And, and a number of forests, I think six or seven of them are still closed now. But, you know, we also hear a lot of people that say they want to be able to come and enjoy the forest. And we're not a national park, so we can't just lock the gate. If we could, we could open and close the forest a lot quicker and, and more often for short periods of time. But we don't have that kind of access. There's roads constantly going in and out of the forest. So we don't have the ability to enforce, fully enforce these kinds of closures to the extent that would keep everybody out all, you know, of the forest when it's closed. So I understand what you're saying. And, you know, we're still in a lot of restrictions. We still have enough restrictions where you don't even have camp, campfires allowed in campgrounds right now.
Yes, but they don't listen. And the point, problem being that when we had the event and they're closing down electricity, if, God forbid, something happened, people wouldn't have any way to get communication. So to me, it would seem like that would be a time that you would want to close down the campgrounds and not have them open because you knew the event was going to happen. We got, we got a notice, so I know that you guys knew it. And it seems to me to be more logical just not to have any campgrounds open at that time, so that we don't have any problems possibly starting.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. We just can't be that kind of, that responsive with our campgrounds, opening, closing. And with only three campgrounds open, we felt pretty comfortable with being able to control any issues in there. And we haven't had fires really start in campgrounds on the forest. It's not, has not been a historic source of fires. It's that dispersed camping. And we, we haven't had that allowed since, since we got into this extreme fire danger. So the, the enforcement, the, the ability to enforce that restriction on dispersed camping, whether the whole forest is closed or just dispersed camping like it is now. You know, we can enforce as best as we can, but people sneak in and tell them to leave, and then they come right back. And so it's certainly always a challenge. And, you know, we, we're doing our best to enforce that when, when we're out there. But I think we need everyone's help too, to, to remind their friends and neighbors that, you know, we have these restrictions in place right now for a reason, and we'll be lifting them as soon as we can.
Thank you.
You're on mute, Kelly.
I usually do that at least once. So maybe this will be my only time. So I don't see any other hands raised. Thank you, Michael, for, for joining us and and giving a report.
See, I had, I had a quick question, Kelly. I'm on to see if the public did. Hey, Michael, did we have a lot of complaints about Sugar Pine this summer? After last summer and all the efforts you and everybody put in, I just wanted to see how things went this summer, because I didn't receive near as many, but wanted to see what.
Yeah, I mean, we did have complaints. I don't know that we had as many as we've had in past years, but, but we did have some complaints. I've heard people report that there were speedboats going around, even though, you know, we worked with the county to, to, I think, I think signage was, was increased up there and patrols and, and the change, of course, with no wake versus a, a speed limit on the, on the reservoir. So so there's certainly still been, been complaints. And we've had, I'd say, whether it's Sugar Pine or anywhere else on our forest, and it's honestly forests all over the nation this summer, we've had unprecedented use. This has been our busiest summer that, that any of us have seen. So that includes Sugar Pine, which already was a very busy place. And so increased use out there and all over the forest. And so we still get complaints about people doing things they shouldn't do out there, trash, you know, people speeding on the reservoir. But, but yeah, I don't think I've heard as many complaints this season as last season. So I think some of the things we've been doing have been working. And I'll also just mention, you know, I think some other things that help out there is we permitted a outfitter and guide permit where, where there's a business out there renting kayaks and, and stand-up paddle boards. So I think having that presence out there in addition to the presence of our, of our rec staff that are out there cleaning up and checking, checking permits and things. I think that's all contributed and helped with that just overall presence of people out there. It shows that, you know, we're, we're making an impact when we're out there and we're seen. And we are working on trying to get funding to put in some, some entrance stations in the future. So that takes money, but we're hoping to get that in the near future, in the next couple of years, if not next year. And, and actually have, at least for weekends, somebody staffed at each of the entrances. So that'll be a huge change as well.
I know, not just with Sugar Pine, but throughout the region, we've had exponential increases in visitation to so many places. And, and I, and just so appreciative of the communication with the Forest Service and your responsiveness to our community and our county, and really appreciate your reports.
Yeah, thank you. You know, we're always trying to strike that best balance with access and restrictions and safety. So so this, this year, season with all the things going on, fire and pandemic, it was an extra challenge for us. But I think, I think we did a pretty good job overall in terms of how we've been handling it so far.
Thanks. Yes, thank you. Up next, I don't see Chief Morris here from Cal Fire, which I imagine they are very busy this time of year. And so up next, we have Chief Ridley with Forest Hill Fire Protection District.
Evening, Michael Ridley, Fire Chief of Forest Hill Fire Protection District. The district's, like everybody else, has been busy. We, we've had several of the power safety shut-offs, and that happens to coincide with the red flag warnings. And we have a new program, which we've jumped in with Placer County and Placer County Fire, Cal Fire. We've, we fly now during these red flag warnings, a 12-foot feather-type flag, like you see out in front of some businesses. Those are, those are just to let the public know that there's a danger out there and to be extra heightened alert. It was already brought up that we, you know, the paradise type of terrain and events that could possibly happen. Excuse me. And we also turn our electronic sign at Station 90 on to warn people. So we have four of those flags flying or available to fly. So you hopefully only see them during the extreme weather, which hopefully doesn't come along all the time, but it seems to coincide exactly with the power safety shut-offs. So we had, well, we had an engine participate in the North Fire Complex and part of a Placer County local government strike team earlier this month, well, should say in September. And then at the end of September, and right now, we have an engine over at the glass fire, again, with the Placer County Strike Team. We also provided an engine for a few days to cover Placer County, the 80 corridor, when there was hardly any resources available. We've provided one engine and three personnel for several nights. They stayed mostly, I believe, at either Colfax or Alta, but they weren't in the district. But available back to us, of course, with the dispatch. Two other things, we activated the, our Department Operations Center during the first power safety shut-off. Red flag warning and the fork fire all hit at the same time, at that same time. Excuse me. Our Board President, Director McColini took over at my request, the Public Information Officer. And we started using social media for the first time heavily. And I don't know, maybe recent history of the district. And it was very successful, keeping everybody appraised. It was every few hours for the first part of the, the event. Then it went down to a few times a day, and then it was morning and evening. And we continue to push out information about our strike teams and stuff, so people know what's going on. So we've been pretty active with social media. And our Insurance Services Office report for the rating is back. It will be heard this Thursday at our board meeting. And then it'll be available for public. And that just recently came out. And I just wanted people to know that they've been, some people have been asking, not at this forum, but have, have asked at this forum early when I was first on, what's the status? Well, it finally came back. And, and it'll be heard by the board on Thursday night at our board meeting. So with that, that's, that's, that's about it. Our office, or I should say, our office is still shuttered for a variety of reasons. We're trying to open it up, but we keep hitting blocks with staffing. So we will be opening. we will be opening up. It may be limited hours and then by appointment only, but, uh, we're trying to open up normal. And or as close to normal as we can get. And then that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Gail, you had a question. Go ahead and unmute yourself and you can ask.
Um, yes, the social media was amazing. And in a small town, you get rumors, rumors start and people panic and I just had to applaud you for being so up on that because it really did help calm a lot of people who don't quite understand fires and, um, anyway, I, I just applaud you for the social media.
Thank you.
Great. I don't see any other hands raised. Thank you, Chief, for coming on and giving a report. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Um, I don't see anyone here from the Fire Safety Council or Fish and Game. So we will move on to Jack Kramer from the Forest Hill Union School District.
Hello. Good evening. Uh, well, I want to start by taking a little short stroll down memory lane. Before we had this thing called Color Tears. And so back in August, due to Placer County's monitoring list status, our district was required to start the school year with distance learning only. And then subsequent to that, in early September, Placer County fell off the monitoring list. And so at that point, we started bringing our students back to school immediately thereafter. And what I'd like to talk a little bit about is our transition plan to full traditional learning at home. And we do this under the mantra of safe, successful, small steps. And so it's important to know that, um, many diff, there are many different districts doing, uh, different plans. And so this is a plan that I believe is best for our district. And we start by prioritizing, uh, first, our students with the greatest needs. And, uh, on September 4th, we did that by bringing our, what we'll call Small Group One, and those were our special day class students. And albeit it was only eight students, but, uh, those students were those in greatest need. On September 25th, we brought back what we call our Small Group Two. And those are students where their families had internet issues at home because mind you, we're doing distance learning only. And so if you're having internet issues at home, that's a severe challenge. Uh, we also brought back students of staff because as we anticipate bringing more students back, we need the requisite staff to support them as well. Uh, we were operating a kids care childcare, uh, in essence for our essential worker families. So all of those children, they were brought back in that small group too, as well as teacher recommendations. And, uh, that was roughly about 80 students that we brought back on September 25th. Today I was pleased to look out our window and see one of our two buses, uh, back in our bus loop. So, uh, we are getting ready to get back to as much of a normal routine as possible. And we anticipate our first day of transportation for bus services, starting on this Thursday, October 8th. Coming up soon, October 15th, which will be our Small Group Three. And, uh, that will encompass our students with individual education plans, our PK to one students. And they're going to be starting with two full days per week. Uh, we're also going to take a look at, uh, any remaining essential worker families and, uh, once again, teacher recommendations. And, uh, I'm estimating by that time, uh, when we bring Small Group Three back, that will represent almost 50% of our students. Thereafter, uh, we are looking at a very, very tentative date of November 12th, which would be our Small Group Four. And, uh, perhaps that will be our grades two and three. And depending on what the landscape looks like, maybe grade four as well. And they will also start with two full days per week, along with the teacher recommendations. So with that, uh, that is our timeline at this point for our transition to bring in as many students back to campus as possible. Relative to that, I'd like to segue into, uh, really the need for classroom and campus volunteers. So I'm just going to say it, Forest Hill, we need you. And, uh, it's due primarily to all of the required and recommended COVID-19 protocols that we go through, along with many new and revised operational processes, all of the simple things that we have done in the past that are just routine and you don't think twice about it. They are now extremely cumbersome and very regimented. Simple things in terms of using the restrooms, uh, having more frequent cleaning, uh, keeping cohorts, uh, safe and apart during our recesses and lunch, and really lacking the ability to use large inside facilities. And so, uh, with that, we have had to hire many extra teacher and staff substitutes to, uh, support our actual staff and teachers and substitutes. What will be interesting is, uh, we need help because, uh, right now we, outside, it's our best friend. Uh, we make use of it as much as we can, uh, barring air quality issues. But soon we will be, very soon, we will be dealing with the rain and snow conditions. And that is going to be very tough to navigate. So, um, having the absence of use of outside and we have to rely more on inside activities, meaning that we have to be even more vigilant with our COVID-19 protocols. And all, all of that takes a tremendous, tremendous amount of resources in terms of people. So we have done hiring, uh, but frankly, we can use a lot more support at our school. And so what I'm asking of the community is volunteer work. And really it's not so much, uh, how many hours or how often that you volunteer. The days and hours, they, they do not need to be great. They just need to be consistent. And so if we can have consistency, we know what we can count on to put into our daily or weekly operational schedule. So whether it's two hours or three hours a week, if we can count on that, we will take it. So with that, if that is for you or you know of others, uh, within the community that's interested, simply contact our district office and, uh, they will, uh, take care of the rest from there. So with that, that concludes my educational report.
Thank you so much. Uh, do we have any questions for Jack Kramer? And don't see any hands raised. Thank you so much for joining us. And thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Up next we have, um, I think Neil, we're having Hank do the update for the, um, Forest Hill PUD, correct?
Are you there, Hank?
I am. How are you doing, Neil?
Good.
Open to whatever you'd like to do, if you'd like to do it, or if you'd like me to.
I'd like you to at this point and I'll add anything that I think of.
Okay, real good. Well, thanks for having me. I'm Hank White with the Forest Hill Public Utility District. Just wanted to report that, uh, on September 23rd or 24th, actually, we completed a transfer of water. The revenue that we'll get for that transfer, we've received about 200,000 already. We'll be getting another little over 400,000 in the next few weeks. It'll be used to build a, a public improvement project right in Forest Hill. It's a, just a fantastic influx of revenue into the community. I'll be working with, uh, the, the staff. I'll be working with the planning committee and the, and the finance committee to bring a project to the board for consideration to improve the distribution system or something in treatment. Uh, remember a few years ago, we built a 1 million gallon storage tank. Uh, that's going to serve the community uh, for, for decades. And it, at no cost to the community. Uh, we didn't have to use, uh, much of the local funds whatsoever. We were able to pay for that infrastructure with transfer proceeds. So that's the plan to do, uh, this year. I'll be bringing that up. First working with staff, then the planning committee, then the finance committee will bring a full project to the board, probably late fall, winter. Maybe just around the corner in 2021. I'm not real sure. Start the planning process, the spring, construction and summer and hopefully be finished before it gets too wet in, uh, October, November, 2021. So let's see. Oh, I want to also mention, uh, during our most recent public safety power shut off, our crew did just a fantastic job. They went in on the first one, it was September 9th and 10th. They went in the treatment plan about one o'clock in the morning. Uh, they kept everything running. We had no hiccups, no interruption to service, no compromising of, uh, water available, available for fire protection. Then the second PSPS, uh, it, it causes our computer systems a lot of havoc, but I guess we're getting better at getting generators going and so on and so forth. So we haven't had a, uh, any hiccups to service and we're prepared to keep it that way as long as these might last. I wanted to say also, oh, we had a hydrant repair. In, um, in, in Todd Valley, there was a, there was an older hydrant. It's about a 1973 model. And one of our members of our crew, Chava Mercado was down in the area and he noticed that it, it wasn't operating properly during an inspection. The guys tackled it. They, they completely disassembled the hydrant and it is an older model, but they were able to find parts. Complete rebuild of the main valve, reassembled it and it's working just perfectly. So I was really glad that those guys are on top of it looking for potential issues in the area, especially right now with the fire danger so high. Uh, we want to make sure each of those hydrants is available. Uh, we get them back into service just as quickly as possible. So that's my report. Neil, did I miss anything?
Well, thank you very much. I'd like to add a couple of things. First, related to water transfers, besides the revenue that comes in from that, there's certainly a political component to it. We're right now in the middle of negotiating for renewal of our water rights to the water at Sugar Pine Reservoir with State Water Resources Control Board. And they sometimes have an attitude that if you either use it or lose it. So we have water which we transfer. And we basically, that represents surplus water. And if they would cut back our allocation of rights to water within Sugar Pine to distribute to the public for the public's beneficial use, then we might not have so much of it available when we have future growth. So the fact that we have it there and we do use it for a purpose downstream means that we could continue to claim it and have rights to it and have that written into our light renewed license permit. So there's political content to doing that, component to doing that as well as the revenue that comes from it. Might also add that during the transfer, the state and federal fish and wildlife departments insisted that we survey and take a look at what potential effects that this running water down through Shertail Creek in the summertime might have on the yellow-legged frogs. And that frog live down at the bottom of Long Shertail Creek. They are a protected species. And they ask us to hire a consultant to come in and actually survey those frogs in the water that goes over them and are they getting flooded out? Are the reproduction habits taking place? Are the pollywogs getting injured by water flowing? And it turns out that we could find hardly any effect or noticeable changes to the frog habitat and use of it and enjoyment of it. They seem to like water. So it was no surprise. The water didn't hurt them. During the power safety cutoffs, we did have our hydrant running outside. If someone had a well that was not able to run because lack of electricity, they were able to come up and get water from our hydrant and take all they wanted. I suspect that some people may drop off there and water their horses too. A board meeting or next board meeting we're anticipating would be next Wednesday, the 14th. We'll be making that decision on this Wednesday. And we haven't decided yet if it's going to be in the daytime or again in the evening. Last month we had a nighttime board meeting and I'm kind of disappointed at the show up number of people that showed up for it. But maybe we need to practice that a little bit more. We'll make that decision announcement by Wednesday of this week. That's about all I had to add to that. Thank you very much, Hank. And I might ask, are there any questions?
Do we have any questions for either Neil or Hank? I don't see any hands raised. I don't believe we have any questions. Thank you so much, Hank and Neil.
Thank you.
Update.
Thanks for having me.
Oh, sorry. Up next I have the Forest Hill Chamber of Commerce. I don't believe I have anyone, um, that is giving a report on that. So if we have someone who does want to give a report or an update, feel free to raise your hand and we can go ahead and, um, and get you on to speak. Um, but in absence of that, we have Supervisor Gustafson next with our county updates.
Thanks, Kelly. And if anybody from the chamber wants to jump on, uh, please do. And, uh, I can stand by. So Dr. Oldham, as you all heard, it's just, um, a great opportunity for the county to have him back in both as head of HHS and, uh, as our interim health officer with his, uh, knowledge and experience from having worked in the last pandemic and really taking over, uh, from, for Dr. Sisson. So we're really thrilled to have him back. And he gave you the report on COVID numbers. Um, that was the first time I had heard that 63% of our deaths were from long-term facilities. So while any death is sad, it's good to know that, um, most of those deaths, as I have reported previously, have all come from pre-existing conditions and situations that, um, were, uh, late-stage life situations. So, but zero new cases in Forest Hill for the last two weeks. And so that's really good news. And keep up the good work in Forest Hill. The Green Waste Day, we had the first, uh, Green Waste Day last Tuesday. 62 customers dropping off green waste and, uh, what staff has told me is they'll monitor that. And if the numbers continue at those levels, they'll continue, uh, that additional day, uh, as, uh, demand continues for it. So, um, please spread the word and let people know to use that free Green Waste Day on Tuesdays at the transfer station. Um, we also extended the deadline for the Placer shares, eat and drinks. Um, that was the additional $1,000 toward, uh, county fees and costs that we would grant to restaurants. And if you know of folks that own a restaurant or, um, uh, takeout food, uh, situation, they can apply for those funds and we've extended it to October 9th. So that gives a little more time. I think what we found with the small business applications, we did it, they were due the Tuesday after Labor Day and that put, uh, we wanted to make sure we gave everybody adequate time to apply for this funding this time. The Free Flu Shot Clinic that we talked about earlier, uh, there's going to be a drive-through on Friday, October 9th from 12 to 4 at Parkside Church. So as Dr. Oldham said, there's many places, the vaccine is readily available. Um, but if you'd like to, uh, visit that one, it'll be at Parkside Church at 3885 Richardson Drive in Auburn, Friday, this Friday, 12 to 4 p.m. There's also one in Rockland on October 14th and one in Roseville on October 21st. The chipper program, we did get the chipper program resumed. The Resource Conservation District had to hire four full-time employees to do that. Um, and with that, the cost went up because the inmate crews were not accessible any longer. So, um, the, uh, cost share portion has risen to $80 per hour. That's for a whole crew to be at your side and usually they don't take a full hour. So it's still a reasonable fee and we would. So it's still a reasonable fee and we would encourage people to use the chipping program to help get rid of hazardous vegetation on their properties. And if you'd like to get on the schedules with that, you do need to call the RCD and that number is 889-0111, extension 3. And we can also, Kelly, maybe put in the chat, the number as well as the question number. Placer County has updated our 911 so that you can send a text message from a mobile phone anywhere in the county to 911. And that really helps those that are hearing or speech impaired to get a message to the 911 services about a potential life jeopardy option, whatever is going on. The text will go to the regular dispatch center the same way a 911 call is routed. So if you're unable to speak or there's a situation which you can't talk, you can text 911. And then tomorrow, we have a Board of Supervisors meeting. So we have a number of items on that. We will be getting an update related to the new metrics that Dr. Oldham didn't talk about tonight. The state last week announced a new metric that really looks at our most vulnerable populations and demographics and making sure there's equity for those individuals to in their, in the testing and the caseload. So the health equity test positivity looks at the lowest quarter of demographic group by wages or salaries, income levels, and make sure that we are taking care of those that are most vulnerable, that are most likely having to go to work and jobs regardless of how they feel and making sure that we're getting PPE, that we're translating for them and that we're also getting testing out for them. So we will hear a full update on that tomorrow and how that might impact our ability to move forward. Right now, we meet those metrics, but as with all of this testing, we never know when we could have another uptick in numbers that could keep us from moving to the next stage of reopening. We also will be continuing or considering continuing, I'm assuming we're going to vote yes, our one-year extension of that interim ordinance to allow outdoor retail and sign requirements to be eased during COVID. That one-year extension is, I'm anticipating that it will pass. I really appreciate that our county departments have worked hard to try to help businesses stay open longer. Obviously, the cold weather is coming, so it may not be as much of an impact for the rest of this season. But hopefully next spring, if we're still in a situation with COVID in our in our numbers that we need outdoor dining, we need restrictions on indoor dining, then we'll have that opportunity for outdoor dining and outdoor retail. So we'll be extending that for a full year. We also will be getting an update on the applications that came in for our Placer Shares Program. I think we approved, we will be hearing what the nonprofits who administered the program approve, see our business council and with the county staff. And those grants to the small businesses as well as to the nonprofits used up most of the money we allocated. There's about $400,000 left. And we'll be hearing a presentation on who received those grants and some recommendations on what to do with those remaining funds. We've gotten quite a bit of email on allocating those to some of the nonprofits that did not qualify. But we also are finding out that some of the businesses did not get their applications in that day after Labor Day. And so I want to at least put a pitch in that some of the businesses have that opportunity if they miss that deadline because it was so close to the peak weekend that maybe they have an opportunity as well to reapply. And then we'll have a presentation from our agricultural marketing and Placer Grown Month of October for harvest and what agriculture really means here in Placer County. We also will be taking action on a limited-term property tax increment proposal with the City of Lincoln. I think some of you may have followed this, that the City of Lincoln, way back when, with a lot of the new development that occurred, there was a tax-sharing agreement between Placer County and the City of Lincoln. And in that, there was a requirement or I wouldn't say a requirement, but an obligation for the City of Lincoln to put together development fees that would make them whole through those new development. Well, for whatever reason, and for a number of reasons, politically and otherwise, those additional revenue streams were not put into place. And the City of Lincoln has really suffered, especially in their public health and safety. So fire and police services or sheriff services have been supplementing pretty significantly. So the, this is an eight-year plan that has been negotiated and negotiated and negotiated for quite some time, where the county will give back to Lincoln some share of of the property tax for a period of time and with an extension for up to 10 years. Eight years is what we're going to be hearing as a recommendation with a two-year extension so that they have time to put together a supplemental, whether it's sales tax or funding stream to make them whole for those services. For the most part, it's going to be replacing the money that we're already helping support by mutual aid and sending sheriff dispatch out to supplement their police force. So helping our small cities remain solvent is really important to the well-being of the county and that's what we'll be considering tomorrow. Finally, we are also doing an affordable housing ordinance fee. That is, in lieu of having to build housing, affordable housing, a developer of eight units to up to 100 units could opt to pay a fee. And that fee would allow the county or nonprofit to build the housing in lieu of the developer building that. Those building less than eight units or seven units or less don't have to pay into that fee as long as it's residential housing. And the fee that we're considering or is being recommended also went through a task force process with the Building Industries Association, our community foundation, many of our service groups who are very interested in making sure we have a larger supply of affordable housing. The proposed fee is $2 per square foot per new structure. So a developer building, I'll say 50, 2,000 square foot homes would have that multiplier times $2 a square foot is their fee. It's not meant to entirely be able to build a new home, affordable home. As we all know, it's very expensive, but it is to match and hopefully help us secure grant funding to get those built. So those are the main items on the Board of Supervisors agenda. And finally, my last update is that I received a resignation letter from Susan McIntosh this last week. Due to some family issues and other commitments, Susan is going to be resigning from the MAC or the forum, sorry. And so with that, we'll be posting that as a vacancy and taking applications. So please spread the word to folks who might want to serve on our forum. And we'll put that out. I don't know, Kelly, how long that'll take? A couple of weeks to get that posted and then accept applications and do the interviews. Any questions? Does anyone have any questions? I don't, I see one. Gail, go ahead and unmute yourself and you can ask your question.
Me again.
Hey, Gail.
Hi. Do you have any idea when we will be able to start up the forum again?
You know, we really don't. The county overall wants to hold on all MAC meetings. And you get classified, even though you call yourself a forum, it's a MAC. During this period, we've been going back and forth with when we restart those meetings. So we've been using opting for town halls in their place. Oh, in fact, I forgot to mention, we have a town hall tomorrow night on the Hidden Falls Expansion Project. And we've had a lot of requests for that to be before all the MACs again. But we're going to do it as a town hall tomorrow night. But Gail, I need to talk to the other supervisors and get this on the agenda because I haven't gotten a clear answer from staff and I think they're waiting for direction. Kelly, unless you've heard anything later today after our meeting this morning? We had a meeting this morning talking about it just internally with my staff and some of the county administrative folks. And we were debating that same thing. When do we, when do we get going again?
Yeah, Kelly and I were talking about the fact that there's no, there's no books on what to do in a pandemic. So it's like, what do we do?
Right.
You're doing a great job.
Oh, thanks, Gail. You know, there is no great job right now during this time. You're going to make half the people mad, whatever you do, that's for sure. You know, I think the important thing is we are making progress and hopefully, you know, anything that you want on an agenda for the town halls, we can handle it that way. Nobody's objected. I think I'm the only one doing town halls of any of the supervisors. So but I believe strongly, we need to keep communicating with the public and these provide us a forum for you to ask questions and us to get back to you and put items on the agenda. Plus your forum, as you know, you have more speakers from all the various service providers helping with the Forest Service and Fire and PUD. And you know, I think it's great participation up here compared to some of the other areas. So we've wanted to keep them going and I'm open to restarting them. I just need to hear what's, what's going on with the other supervisors. So I'll ask tomorrow, when I'm down there, how we can get this on the agenda and get direction moving forward.
And then just another quick thing, the Park Subcommittee cannot meet.
Right.
But the Memorial Hall Committee can? Because they're not part of the forum, is that it?
The Park Subcommittee, and you're the only one who has one of those. Forest Hill has a lot of unique things. As you all know, that's why you live there. The Park Subcommittee is advisory to the MAC. So if the MAC's not meeting, the Park Committee can't meet. The MEMH Hall, Memorial Hall Boards are structured under a different ordinance of the county and meet independently. And they make their recommendations directly to the Board of Supervisors. So that's why it's different.
Yeah. Which is okay right now because we're getting into that rainy, snowy season where we can't get a lot accomplished. But the pickleball is going very well.
Good, good.
You're a great little team there.
That's great.
Okay.
Thanks, Neil. Any other questions?
Sharon has a question. Sharon, I unmuted you. You can go ahead and unmute yourself in.
Well, number one, I want to thank Cindy very much for being open to having discussions with town hall meetings. I think that's fabulous that you're willing to do that and get us all together and discuss things. So thank you very much for that.
Kelly, Kelly does all the hard work.
Well, yeah, Kelly, you're great. Thanks for going. But you're the one who at least says you're the only one of supervisors that's doing that. And I really appreciate, and I know the town really appreciates that too. I'm actually going to say that I'm not really in favor of the forum meeting yet. Being a health professional too, we can't, we don't know what's going on. And until they get something with either a vaccine or something going on where we have enough room that you don't have a forum meeting, six people, you know, six feet apart or eight feet apart, it doesn't make sense to me and how many people might come. So my question though is how many people actually right now are on this meeting? Do you have any idea how many people show up?
It showed 17. Is that right, Kelly? We had 21 at one point and now we have 17.
And you don't have any idea if a lot of the forum members are on or not?
Yeah, a lot of the forum members are.
Because I'm wondering if we can have a forum meeting this way if we get enough people participating this way to call it a forum meeting.
To get a quorum. That's what I need to ask the other supervisors. For some reason, they were concerned about technology and not having the access, not everybody having access.
Yes.
As to why, just do it as a town hall, but don't make decisions or recommendations. And Larry posted something that the chamber is doing Safe Halloween. COVID-19 protocol will be adhered to. So wanted to make sure I announced that. But Sharon, I appreciate your comments and I will definitely follow up with the board members tomorrow and see what we can do because there's just a lot going on. I mean, now more than ever, I think people need to hear from their leadership as to what the next steps are, especially as we head into winter season.
Right. And to me, you know, when you have the flu season coming on with the COVID, it's just not a safe idea, in my mind anyway, to get a group of people together. Because every time that happens, it breaks out. And we don't need to have it any worse than where we are right now. That's for sure. So that's all I wanted to say, but I wanted to thank you very much for doing these town hall meetings. And we have a very good community that participates.
Absolutely. And we had a lot of meetings that I can tell you at certain MACs where we never had 18 or 21 people. Right, Kelly? Yes.
Well, I think our community cares. And you know, again, we're more isolated and we're the more can do, we can do it, community, as far as I'm concerned. It's kind of been the way it's always been.
Absolutely.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kelly.
No problem. Debbie Sanchez, I'm going to unmute you, Debbie, if you want to ask a question or have a comment. But I see that you wrote in the question and answer that the, I assume you mean the Halloween event is not a chamber-sponsored event. Is that correct?
Correct. We are just putting up a booth down by the boardwalk, but we're not sponsoring anything for the purposes of the pandemic and everything that's still uncertain. We're just helping to answer questions. And I let the deputy sheriff know that there was something going on downtown, but we're not sponsoring it this year just for those reasons. We're not ready. If that makes sense.
Yes. Yes. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
All right. So with no other questions, we are going to move on to our question and answer. If, I know we have kind of been having a few people ask questions as well. But if anybody would like to ask a question, make a comment about any item. Also, if there is something that you would like to see come to one of our town halls, feel free to share with us or at a later date if something comes to mind after this meeting is over. But does anybody have any questions? And then also to highlight in the chat, I posted the information that Supervisor Gustafson was talking about with the chipper program. Then there's also a website that has their flyer with more information. So I included that link in the chat as well in case that's something that you're interested in. So. I don't see any hands raised. Sharon asked if we could stay at 7:00 p.m. rather than 6:00. And yes, I think we are going to start having it at 7:00 because there are other meetings that are starting to happen at 6:00 and we want to make sure that there is not a conflict and that everyone can attend all of the meetings. So we will be doing that. And then Gail, go ahead and unmute yourself. I, you can.
Okay. I was just wondering if, I had asked you this before. I was just wondering if, I had asked you this before, if there is a place that people can go to, to re-listen to this, if they wanted the information?
You know? Yes. Yeah. So the county just, I think it's on YouTube, and they just created the format and the page and uploaded it. It's all new to us, so they were working on having a spot. So we will get those out, and I will let you know when they're ready. I have the video recorded from last time that we can upload to the, to the site, and you can watch it.
That's great. Tell the community too, so they can get the information. Great, thank you.
No problem. All right, let's see. Do we have any more questions? Let me check real quick. Sharon, I unmuted you. Can unmute yourself.
It's just me and Gail today. You know, my other question is, for the Parks Committee, is there a way for you guys to help them set up a Zoom so that they can meet the same way we do? And then they could have discussions? Is it what Gail was talking about? Is, is there a way for that to happen, that you guys might be able to help them so they can get something together and have their monthly meeting that way?
I, I, I know we, technically, we can. Techno, tech.
Technically.
Technologically, we can. The problem is that if the MACs aren't meeting, we were told the, the Parks Committee can't recommend to anybody because they can't go directly to the Parks Commission. And because you're the only one with a separate committee, subcommittee, it was, that was the issue. But I will check on all of this tomorrow and when we can get this moving forward to at least try to do it through Zoom like we're doing. I think so many people are using Zoom, and for the public that can't, I, I mean, we can only go so far during these times. And I hate to not have groups meeting and working on good projects because next summer will be here before you know it.
Right. And the other thing is, is there a way for us to get our library open a little bit earlier than December?
Oh, I meant to mention that. You know, I, I need to ask about that, Sharon. I did not see, I do not understand why it's having to wait till December. I know they're trying to make slow progress forward, and it takes more staffing because of how they're doing the protocols. And so that's why they're rolling these out slowly. But I have not had a chance yet to ask Mary, why do we have to wait till December?
Right.
Especially for Forest Hill, because you're so far up, yeah.
Correct. It's, and then you have older people who can use the computer if they need to and use the library for books, whatever, and they don't want to go, especially in wintertime, they're not going to drive down the hill.
Yep. Good question. We'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Now I can't hear anybody.
Yeah, Kelly's, Kelly's on mute. I'm going to say, if we don't have other questions, Kelly, I have to be at Medlars at 7:00 a.m. So I'm Gail, do you have something real quick?
Well, I just wanted to say that I agree with Sharon about the meeting too early, and I was just wondering when, that's all. If they're working on something. So that's great. This is working out okay. Yeah. And thank you both, you and Cindy and Kelly, doing an awesome job.
Truly, truly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your thanks. Nice to have friendly voices. At least once in a while.
I don't hear anymore, or I don't see any more hands raised for questions. So I think are finished. Yeah.
Okay.
All for coming. We really appreciate it. We will see you next month. Will, it will be at 7:00, and it will be the first Monday of the month. I'm not quite sure what day that is, but.
The second.
Second. The second.
Back to you before that, Sharon, on the libraries. We need, yeah.
I think that would be, I'm just really worried, especially wintertime with people trying to drive.
You got it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Polls that day, so I'm working the polls for three days.
What?
Yeah. So if I can get to see it afterwards, that'd be great.
Right. Okay. Well, thanks, everyone, for joining us.
Okay, bye-bye, everyone.
Evening.
Bye.
Bye.